Okay, so let's start. Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, thank you very much for coming here. It's very nice to see especially a lot of young people here who are concerned. So basically, just to introduce very briefly why we wanted to organize this. So the European Students' Union, together with the Erasmus Student Network and AEGE Europe, the European Students' Forum, were very concerned about the future of the EU Mobility and Education Programme, so we decided to get together as the three biggest student organisations in Europe and develop a common position and a common draft, which we would later on try to send it to the member states and to the governments now, prior to the meeting of the Council where the new budgets will be discussed. So we see that there's a very big importance in investing and making sure these new programmes on education and youth work well, so this is why we're here together today presenting all this to you, and hopefully to send this message to the member states for their meeting at the end of November. So yes, I would also like to thank some people who couldn't be here today, like Katarina Nevadalova, a member of the European Parliament. Other members of the European Parliament are not here yet, but they will be popping in, and also especially to Nikos Chrisohelos for hosting this event and allowing us to speak here in the Parliament. So yes, let's get started. First, I would like to start with Karina Ufer, Chairperson of the European Students' Union, so please, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Luis, and thank you, AEGE, for organizing this meeting. Extremely important for us. So I would like to start with the, well, we're speaking about the European crisis. I guess you all are hearing a lot about the European crisis, and then about the possible lesson we could learn out of this. And the lesson could be the one, if we want to have the knowledge-based economy, it's not enough to invest less than 1% on education, especially since the current education programme, such as the LLP, the Life and Learning Programme, proved its efficiency during the audit procedure. It's not only proved its efficiency audit-wise, but it's also highly popular among the students. And I would say, please take a look at the paper, the joint paper we produced together with AEGE and ESN, but also I want to draw your attention to the fact that we, in Svan me personally, we receive hundreds of emails from students every day asking, so what's happening with Erasmus? Is Erasmus in danger? What we should do and what the decision-makers want to do. And I would say, while the clear benefits of Erasmus are not only the personal benefits and the strengthening of the European culture, but it's also, Erasmus also has been a driving force for the Bologna process, and I would say we should remember this, because it gave a boost for the Bologna process, opened up universities, opened up the circulation of brains, of ideas, and I think this has to be strengthened and this has to be continued. Also, there's a massive impact on education, education quality, because it encouraged the teachers to focus finally on the learning outcomes, not only what they know the best. So I would say, when the young people are asking the policymakers, so what we have to say? So are we able to save Erasmus grants? Are we able to invest in the knowledge-based society? The answer should be yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Karina. So now, of course, I'm going to try and get always the students and the young people to speak first, I hope you don't mind. So now, Emmanuel Alfransen, the President of the Erasmus Student Network, please.
Thank you very much, Luis, and also thank you to AEGE for organizing this. I also consider this very, very important. So as Luis already said, I'm the President of the Erasmus Student Network, and we work a lot with the social integration of international students, so we know them well. And let me start with saying that we strongly believe in mobility and the Erasmus programme as its most impactful tool at the European level. The European Commission now suggests a 70% nominal increase for the programmes covering education, training, youth and sports. We believe that this is really the minimum amount needed to achieve the ambitious goals that are set forth in the ET 2020 and also in the overall EU 2020 strategy. We really want to urge decision-makers, that is, the Parliament and also the Council, that, to really maintain these numbers, we think it's crucial. Also, Europe works on the principle of subsidiarity, that means money should only be spent on the European level if it's not done more efficiently and effectively at a lower level. We cannot think of many areas where the money place, is better placed on the European level than for mobility. Mobility is at the core of the European project. Building Europe needs more mobility, we believe. Maybe what I say is obvious to you now, I indeed hope it is. Let me just give you very briefly three reasons why we believe that every euro spent in Erasmus is a euro spent well, a euro that we get back 10 times over. First, personal development. People going on Erasmus grow as individuals. Erasmus opens their minds and hearts, and they learn about themselves to become more complete and enriched personalities. Also, skills for the labour market. Not least our own studies, the ESN does, and our own experience shows that people learn more transversal skills that are so much needed for today's fast-changing economies and environments. My third point is shaping the European identity. Europe cannot only be a theoretical concept. People need to experience Europe firsthand. I can imagine few better ways than making it a natural part of education, as the Erasmus programme does. I'm standing or sitting here today, speaking up for the future of the Erasmus programme, but Erasmus represents almost 3 million stories, all different and unique. I ask you to add many more stories to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emmanuel. And now, the last youth organisation for today, Catherine Renner, Vice-President of AEGE Europe, the European Students' Forum, please, Catherine, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Luis. So, as you already heard, investment in education is a way out of the crisis, but it's a long-term investment. The decrease in the budget, if we decrease the budget for education now, it will have long-term effects in the future. And lower spending in education, we can see that we have also bigger problems in other fields like social care, criminality rate, and this healthy society. So if we invest in education now, every euro that we invest, we will receive returns of tens of euros. So mobility is a key factor in increasing the employability of young people, and especially now with the more and more integrated labour market, we need, young people need to adapt to the challenges that they face, and mobility and especially programmes like Erasmus and exchange programmes can help them to do that. They learn to adapt to intercultural environments and to be more flexible with the challenges they face. They also gain linguistic competences. For the first time, they actually have to use a language that they learnt in their educational system, but they only learnt the basic grammatical structures. So in a Europe that now has 23 official languages, these language skills are indispensable for their employability. But of course, the effects of learning mobility are not limited to that. Spending time abroad also increases their students' self-confidence, they are more independent, they broaden their horizons to the opportunities that Europe has and Europe gives them, and ultimately programmes like Erasmus create a European identity and a European solidarity among young people from different countries in Europe. Of course, these benefits, these opportunities cannot only be provided through the framework of formal education, but also through youth organisations, which play a crucial role in the development of young people. Through volunteering, they learn skills like leadership, project management, communication skills, international competencies, and many more. These are required by the labour market, but they are not provided by our formal education system many times. So actually, youth NGOs also smoothen the transition from the educational system to the labour market. And they also provide a direct outreach to needs, so young people who are not in education, employment or training, and who would otherwise be lost by labour market, but youth organisations can provide a direct outreach and can involve them directly. So a strong and sustainable investment in youth NGOs benefits the labour market in long term, and also helps with the achievement of the employment goals of EU 2020. The most efficient tool to support youth organisations is of course the administrative support, which sustains their daily activities and ensures the quality of their work. Recognition of the work has not only to be done through financial support, but also through recognition of their work as such, meaning that we have to recognise the skills they provide through non-formal education, which are often not recognised by employers, not only because they don't need them, but because they are not promoted enough and there's not enough information about them. This is why we need a European framework for the recognition of non-formal education, the Commission is already working on it, but efforts have to be strengthened in this direction. Of course, the role of youth NGOs is not only limited to providing skills which make young people more employable, but, and this also shouldn't be their main purpose, but they teach young people to take responsibility in their community, to be proactive, to find solutions for the problems they face in society, and they encourage young people to be active and to, they create active European citizens. So especially international organisations are very effective in bridging this gap between the European institutions on the one hand, and the realities of young people in Europe on the other hand. The importance of this is already recognised by initiatives of the European Commission, such as the structured dialogue, but it's not enough to provide young people with platforms to express their opinion. They also have to have the possibility to co-manage these platforms, to feel ownership, and to set their own priorities for funding and for consultation. So it is vital for young people to be involved from the beginning, and to see that they can give a direct input into policies and decision-making processes. And finally, as AEGE, we acknowledge and appreciate the focus that is given in the new proposal by the Commission to support the successful initiatives like volunteering, the volunteering skills, youth exchanges and so on. And we urge the national authorities to follow this increase in the budget and to recognise the importance of investment in young people through these different programmes. And especially in the current economic crisis, it is extremely important to invest in youth and to invest in education, because if we cut these budgets, we will not see the effects maybe directly, but we will see the effects in 20 years, and especially worrying with the current youth unemployment rate that we have in Europe, but also if we monitor the loss of faith of young people in the European project and the European idea. So this is why we have to invest. It might take courage to come up with these investments now, especially with the crisis, especially with the skepticism, but politicians have to bring up the courage to invest in this, and this is what we request from them as young volunteers and as young Europeans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine. So yes, we've heard a lot of very interesting things. Now, I will give the floor to the other side. The other stakeholders first, Nico Chrisohelos from the Green Party for hosting this, thank you again, and the floor is yours.
I'd like to thank you, because it's very interesting to participate in such a discussion. You know better than me why it is important to invest in youth and youth policies in a period of crisis. It's very important, because in my country, the level of unemployment for the youth is 55%. That means, in any case, the people move from the country, they go everywhere, so it is very important, this investment in mobility of the young people, not because they cannot survive, but because they have different possibilities to survive, and the right to select where to go. This is very important, and we need tools to help the young people to react and act during this crisis and to improve their skills and their experience. This is very important. I think that investing in youth, it is not something wasteful. It must be the priority for the European Union, because, not only because of general rights of the youth, but also the answer to this crisis, the current crisis, must be more Europe. And more Europe means that there is a driving force, the youth, that can promote and revitalise this EU project we call here in the European Parliament. Without the youth participation, it's not possible to have a political, economical and financial European Union, because the people now, they see Europe as an obstacle to their existence, even existence. So we can change this approach and persuade the people that the future is more Europe, but a coherent Europe, a social Europe, a youth Europe, a political union. This is very important, and you can play this role. And we have to invest in education, in training, in youth rights, but also in this new role for the youth, political role, it is a political role for the youth, to improve what is the view of the citizens for Europe. And a better Europe means that the people can accept the European policies that are fair, unless Europe means that we go back. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. And now, I would like to give the floor to Peter Matjasic, President of the European Youth Forum.
When you said that no youth organisation is going to speak after the three that have spoken, I was a bit worried. European Youth Forum is a platform of youth organisations in Europe, combining 97 at the moment, international youth organisations and national youth councils, and three of them, our most important student organisations, are represented here, SO, AEGE and ESN. And it's also a pleasure for me to bring into this debate of this public hearing that speaks about securing funding for education and youth programmes in 2014, 2020, some of our positions. As you might know, Youth Forum has been standing up especially for the current Youth in Action programme, because we focus more on volunteering opportunities and non-formal education, while we of course also support very much the Erasmus programme, the mobility, the education, the formal education, we have a holistic view on the education, which combines both elements and both sides. I'm very happy to hear from our MEP from Greece, talking about the things that really reflect our own positions, how important it is to invest in youth nowadays in Europe, how important it is to try to really commit to the young generation, because we always hear as young people, we are the future of tomorrow, we claim we are the present, and currently we are in not-so-good situation. I would call it deep shit, if you allow me this expression. And it's really important that it's the member states who live up to their promises. We have heard a lot of promises to this generation and to previous ones, and we cannot continue this way. We are very worried after this week, that the Council has failed to come up with a current agreement on the future MFF. We have had all battles with the Commission on the actual programme and on the specificities of it, but I think we are very much in favour, and we are in the same boat with the Commission when we fight for sufficient funding for youth organisations, sufficient funding for education and youth in the next MFF, and we need to work together on this to convince the member states of the importance of this topic. It's very worrying to see if the absolute numbers of the investment that has been done in the previous framework would go down. Of course, we called together with the Commission for an increase, and it's important to stress that we understand the situation in which we are in in Europe, and that we potentially can live with having the same amounts, but we cannot go below the things that we had in the past, because the challenges are different, the challenges are multiplying, the social unrest is rising, and it's exactly those things that you mentioned, it's the youth policy that usually suffers most. It's the kind of things that were cut first during the austerity rounds in Spain, in Portugal, in Greece, is those kind of things that protect the safety net that young people need to become autonomous and empowered young citizens. So we really need to look on how we can work together. My colleagues already stressed the importance and the benefits of such programmes for young people and for youth organisations, so I'm not going to repeat that, but for me, it's important that we now work together, all of us, to convince the member states to not cut, but to invest in young people, while at the same time, we need to make sure that we do improve the programme proposal that is on the table, that we follow what the Parliament and the Council have already done, where we need to ensure that young people are involved when it comes to how the programme will actually look like, that we will have specific programming committees that will be adjusted to the different formations, so that when we talk about education, the experts on education are following it, when we talk about youth, it's the experts on youth following it, that we have designated budget lines, so that we don't fall into this trap of competition between education and youth, because it's not about that, it's about recognising the difference in needs of youth organisations and of education stakeholders, and to really promote both of them, because both of them are for us complementary. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Peter. And now, I would like to give the floor to Jordi Correl. Jordi Correl comes from the Education and Culture DG, from the European Commission, and is one of the main faces of the new proposals of the Commission, so we're very happy to have him here, and yeah, helping us and trying to send this message, so.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me to this meeting. Let me just start by saying that it's not a matter of faces, that this proposal is the result of a collective work of a number of officials in the Commission, but also it has been drawing on the feedback that we got from the different stakeholders, both NGOs, MEPs of course, and all the consultations that we had. I think that the Commission, when putting forward this proposal for a new programme, for the Erasmus programme, has been politically bold. As you know, the Commission put forward a proposal for the overall multiannual financial framework for the period 2014-2020, without proposing an increase in the overall budget. Having said that, in two specific areas, education and youth for one, and research and innovation for two, it has proposed an important increase, 70% for the first one, education and youth, and 45%, 46% for research and innovation. And I think that this is a political choice that the Commission has made, and that has put forward to decision-makers, to the Council on the one hand, and member states of course, and also to parliament. And I think that what the Commission has done is to put the money where the mouth is. Member states at the highest level have agreed to a new 2020 strategy, and many of the benchmark indicators there relate to education and relate to research, therefore money should be put, budget should be put there, and as someone said before I spoke, this should be seen not as expenditure, but as investment. So we believe that we have a good case. When it comes more particularly to this proposal, to the Erasmus programme, I think that on substance, we agree. We have had interesting discussions with many people around this table, but I think that we agree, first of all, that it is an investment, we said it before, secondly, that it's one of the ways out of the crisis. Investing today in education, in youth, in research and innovation will pave the way for a better future. Having said that, we know that the budgetary times are very difficult, so we need to ensure added value, and I think that you referred to that before. So I think there are a couple of principles that have to be, that have to be very clearly embodied in the proposal. One is the EU added value. We must make sure that when we propose to spend a euro at EU level, it is better spent at this level than at national level. We must make sure that we have an impact, and you have been referring to impacts before, in the sense that it's not just an impact for the beneficiaries of the action, it has to go beyond that, and we believe that the actions that we have proposed do that. It's not just only beneficial for the specific individuals which participate in the action, but it goes beyond that, and it has an institutional impact and a systemic impact as well. And then, of course, we have to try and make them as simple as possible, so that beneficiaries can find their way in this complex world which is applying for. And we think that what we have put on the table achieves that. It achieves that, first of all, because it brings together different sectors of education, training and youth, in our view, they belong together, each keeping their specificities of course, but they belong together, and we believe that we will manage to have this more streamlined approach, which will produce good results. Of course, the Commission's proposal is just a proposal, and in the course of negotiations with member states within the Council and with parliament, of course, this proposal is improved, and we hope that at the end of the day, not too late in 2013, the institutions, Council and parliament will agree to a proposal, and we hope that they will keep the ambition that the Commission put forward on the table when it comes to budgetary figures. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jordi. And now, Simona, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce it right, Frans Crute, from the European Citizens Initiative Fraternita 2020, please, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, on behalf of Fraternita 2020, I would like to thank for hosting and organising this public hearing, which is very important for young Europeans. Fraternita 2020, it's a first European citizens initiative, supported by one-headed NGOs from all European member states, including European Erasmus Network and AEGE Europe. We would like to express our strong support for Erasmus programme. The share of the European Union budget currently spent on European Union exchange programmes is around 1.2%. The Commission has proposed to increase this amount to around 1.6% in the future. This is simply too low to reach out to individual citizens on a sufficient scale. Fraternita 2020 calls on the European Council to go beyond this proposal in this extraordinary summit on November 22, 23 in Brussels. We deem a share of 3% of the European Union budget being spent on European Union exchange programmes starting from 2014 appropriate in the current economic environment. The expansion of European Union exchange programmes will have to bring down youth unemployment and will stimulate sustainable growth by investing in European people, the most precious resource our continent has to offer. We call on all European Union citizens that have, in spite of all crises, not lose hope for united and harmonious future of our continent, to sign Fraternita 2020 before November 22, to send a strong signal to the European Council that is a way why the citizens of Europe want. In addition, I would like to say that every day, we receive more and more signatures for our first European citizens initiative. So far, we have more than 6,000 signatures from all 27 member states. It shows that this topic is very important, not only for young people, but for all Europeans, because we, young people, we are the future of European Union. Thank you a lot for your attention.
Thank you very much, Simona. And now, we are still waiting for some members of the European Parliament who wanted to be present and support this event, so now what we would like to do is open this debate also to you, because I know that some of you are willing to ask some questions, but also, if any of the speakers want to maybe ask some questions to the other speakers or intervene, please feel free to do it. So if anyone has something to ask to any of the speakers, just raise your hand and press the button. We will also, later, we will give the chance to the people who were not able to come here through social media, they sent some questions as well, so some of our colleagues will read the questions with some young people sent through Facebook, okay? So, yeah, questions? No? Yeah, Peter?
I have a question for Mr. Chrisohelos, if I can pronounce correctly. You mentioned youth rights, which is something that we work on a lot in the European Youth Forum, where we try to have a rights-based approach to developing youth policy, but I would be interested, since you mentioned the term yourself, how do you understand youth rights and how they are maybe different than the general human rights? Because that's an ongoing debate that we have, so it would be nice to pick up that, even though I know it's not directly related to the topic, but since you mentioned it, it would be good if you could elaborate a bit.
How I can explain it in a practical way? Now we face a crisis in Greece. Okay, we had a lot of problems, fiscal problems, but the solution that is selected to face these problems is against the youth, for example. One of the measures is the obligation for the youth to work with a very low salary. That means that it's not possible for the young people living in the country to survive with 500, let's say something more, to have a house, to stay alone. It's not necessary that the young people have to stay in their families, but if you want that these people are free to move, to go everywhere they want to do their life, they have to have at least a salary that can support their life they decide to do. they have to have at least a salary that can support their life they decide to do. And the second is that now there are a lot of problems with the universities. In reality, there is an attack to the universities, so it is not sure that we can support the work in the universities, the research, although one of the goals of Europe 2020 is the increase of research. And then you have to invest in social policies and social research, not only just production, but also the new problems, the problems that face the young people, for example, the new result, to research about the result of the crisis, because it changes. You have to invest money there. Okay, we support a policy for fiscal consolidation, but this must be done in a more fair and balanced way, and to give more chances, more support, to invest in young people to benefit from the crisis and change the whole attitude, that means the development model, the social system, because there are social policies that are not efficient. You have to invest there and to integrate the young people, to give new ideas, fresh ideas about a real social cohesion policy, and you need to integrate the young people to develop new ideas, because the old system has not existed anymore. But if you say that the young people will stay with fifty-five percent unemployment, and that some people, they have to work, but they earn, let's say, 500 euros, then you say that the young people from Greece, they have to live, but they don't decide themselves to live, but they decide to live because they cannot exist anymore in Greece. So they don't have the freedom of select. Yes, I like very much, as I was a student, I decided to travel a lot, to know better what happens in other societies, to learn better the other cultures. But now it's not the case. The people have to leave the country because they cannot survive there. And this is different from, and it is some different from human rights, different from other type of rights, something more concrete. The young people must be the driving force for a new world, a new Europe and more Europe, but they can be part of, they must be part of the solution, part of the new decisions.
Want to comment on that, Peter? No? Okay, any other questions? Comments? No? Or else I... Ah, yes, sorry.
I would like to ask one thing. So, I mean, I've heard a lot of, let's say, negative opinions, also on the council opinion now on the budget, so maybe the Commission and also the parliament could give some updates on that, how the negotiations are going. And then I would also like to know what more we could do as youth organizations, as student organizations, to really support this process and make ourselves heard.
As I know, at the moment, the discussion is very hard. It is not decided. They will discuss in November, on 22th of November, there is a meeting, but the messages are not very well about that. As you know, the European Parliament wants an increase in the budget, but also is asking for new tools for the budget. I mean, like this taxation for TFF, you know, and other new instruments for taxation and own sources for the budget. This is the first. But from the other side, there are countries that say, we don't like anymore to pay more for the budget, for the European, for MFF. And that means a reduction of five to twenty-five percent. And mainly, they focus on agricultural reform or agricultural policy and social cohesion. This is stupid. In a period, we need more cohesion, we need more social policies. There are a lot of proposals for reduction of this budget. We don't know, but we have to wake the people, I mean, in every country, that it's not acceptable. In a period of crisis, you need more social investments, at least social investment. You have to increase the funding for youth, because in other way, then the people cannot accept what happens. It is not only numbers, it is not only deficit or debt, it's about human beings there. This is very important. And so, if it happens, what now is the reality, it will be a reduction for the budget for Greece, forty percent, in a period that Greece needs money. It will be a reduction for Spain, thirty percent or more, thirty-two percent, for Portugal, for Ireland. I mean, for the countries that now suffer from the crisis. And of course, in parallel, it will be a reduction in social policies, in policies that are very important at this period of crisis.
I don't have much to add. I mean, there are some proposals on the table in view of the meeting that the MEP referred to. The Commission very clearly believes that the proposal, as I said before, that it put on the table is a realistic and yet ambitious one, and therefore, we hope that an agreement will be able to be found around this proposal, basically.
I can just add, maybe what we are trying to do at the moment, we're trying to raise awareness about the different amounts that the EU invests in the different areas. And we have a campaign ongoing called loveyoufuture.eu. You can check where it's a bit in a funny, satirical way, mentioning why it is important to invest in youth and comparing to flying cows and how the EU invests more per capita in a cow than in a young person, of how unacceptable it is that the subsidies for wine sector in one budget year of the EU have been higher than the seven years of support to education and youth programs in the past. And this kind of, sounds trivial, but it's actually fact and a sad fact that we have this situation. So it's really calling upon the member states, because now it's in their hands, the MFF is in their hands. The parliament is strong, and we have good cooperation with the parliament, with especially the rapporteur, Calvin, from Bulgaria, who is working on the MFF report. And the youth organizations and the Youth Forum are pushing where we can in the advocacy. But we, this is the European level, we need to see what we can do at national level. And we understand that it's very difficult at the moment, given the crisis, given the priorities of member states on other things. But this is exactly what we are calling for. You have to change priorities, as you said, you have to make a shift in the logic of which type of development you're focusing on, because the current system has obviously failed, it needs to be tweaked, it needs to be either reinvented or improved, and youth should be at the heart of it. So it's not that we are against other groups in society or anything like that, but when it comes down to hardcore decision, it's time that youth is not left on the side, but that we, instead of investing, for example, in tanks and in armor, we need to invest in youth and focus in education. That needs to be the kind of choices we need to be able to make, and we need to, if not sooner, then we need to use the next European elections, where we need to base ourselves on that kind of thing, to mainstream youth policies and youth issues, so that people can have a choice on what does it mean. Because the EU is not only about consensual politics, that's good, but sometimes hard decisions need to be taken, and it's time that we take them.
More questions? Yes?
Hi, I'm Norbert Gasky, from Mr. Christofysics' office, member of the parliament. He was supposed to be here himself, but unfortunately, an unexpected commitment is prolonging. So let me just say something. I'm not sure if he would share entirely what I'm going to say, but probably Mr. Christos Helles is going to at least agree with me that if some of you watched it or heard it two, three weeks ago during the plenary session in Strasbourg, there was a debate on Erasmus. And it must be highlighted that this institution has hardly ever seen a debate where such anonymous points of views would be shared. Really, the politicians, the members of the parliament, from all political groups, really supported the Erasmus project, and calling it, if at one of the most important achievements of the European Union integration idea. So I think, I guess it was you, Peter, saying that you are most in the same boat with the European Commission. I would say that European Parliament gives you a strong support too, and we all know what's the third party deciding about the budget. And what my suggestion and my recommendation would be for all youth organizations, probably to lobby a bit more on the national level, because I see that on the European level, you have all the support that you can get. The European Commission proposal is very ambitious. I would say that the new Erasmus for All program that combines all the previous projects, as I said, is very, very ambitious. So right now, I guess it's on the side, is the part of the moment for the member states to say, yes, we agree with this, and we are eager, finally, to contribute more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to react. I think it's very interesting or very important to inform the public in our countries about the position of governments. Usually, the people don't know well what their government supports during the council meetings, and at the end, they receive the decision as a decision of the European institutions instead of the decision by the governments. And the governments come and say, we want a reduction of youth programs, and at the end, if there is such a reduction, the people will understand that the European institutions decide about that. So it is good if you react and ask your governments what is their position about the youth policies, about youth budget, and then distribute this in your, in mass media and inform us also in the European Parliament. Because I know many times that the governments come here and say something very negative, and they don't have informed the people there in their country.
Any more comments? Yeah?
Yeah, I guess, I'll have a comment and a question. I guess we also, through the network of the forty-seven unions in thirty-eight countries, we do some homework, and we talk to the governments as well about the importance of investing in education. But I have also, well, a question or a suggestion, because, for example, tomorrow, we invite also the member states to discuss Erasmus, and we have attendance of about twenty member state representatives. But I rather have quite a practical question. Well, it seems we have a consensus that we need to invest in education, I guess, like in the parliament, among ourselves, I would say also the governments would quite support this, but when it comes to the budget, so it's quite likely, so we'll have the cuts. So the question is, how it's technically possible to protect some of the areas? Is it possible to put a red tape on some of the spendings? How it works when we'll see the real numbers? So the whole procedure, if someone could explain this, that would be very helpful.
Any volunteers to explain? No? No? Yeah? No? Okay, no volunteers. So, maybe...
If I may, I'm not a volunteer because I don't visit any courts.
Very good. Very good. Do you have any further comments on... No?
Maybe we just need to look into this aspect as well. I mean, we need to have more cooperation between the budget people, then, and I guess the education people, and obviously, the member states and the people who take the decisions on the national level, not only the ministers of education and youth.
I think at the moment, the big discussion is if we have an increase in the budget or a serious decrease of the budget. If it is decided, then we will discuss about the different budget lines. But at the moment, or the whole discussion is concentrated on the budget as a whole, because even in the European Parliament, we haven't discussed about amounts, although we propose some directions. What we want is an increase in the budget, but then we will discuss the different budget lines after the decision or the court decision.
Maybe let's go to the questions from which were sent to social media. Who's gonna... Yeah.
Yes, okay. I have one question, which is quite open, more of a general question. So the question was, since the investment and the choices which are made in the budget, the way it's split and the percentage which is invested in each area says a lot about the kind of Europe that we want. And the question is actually saying, what is it, the Europe that we wish for the, after those seven years, this seven years of financial period? So I don't know to whom it is addressed, I don't know who wants to answer. What kind of Europe we wish to see in seven years? Because now it's the time that you make, we make the decision and we invest in several of the areas that we think should be the most important. So what is it that we want after those seven years? I don't know if it's clear. That's how I understood the question.
So, anyone who feels that wants to answer, please go ahead.
Well, I don't have the whole picture, probably. I mean, for us, I think after the seven years, we really hope that Europe will be more educated with this new program. This will also help unemployment, more mobile, and in that sense, just more European. I think these programs really aim at European integration, and we really hope that Europe will grow together and become more Europe, and this is one of the main goals that, at least for our organization, is really important.
I think we must answer that after this crisis, what will be the Europe? And then, if we decide that we need a more coherent Europe, a more social Europe, then we have to invest money also there, because now the budget is only one percent of the gross domestic product. That means nothing. It means nothing. It's less than the budget of a country. So we cannot go forward with European cohesion without an increase in the budget. And then, if you say that in seven years, who will be the people who will, who must be direct the different sectors in Europe? The youth. So you have to invest there, because without investment in the people who will be the driving force in Europe, then you will fail. This is very simple. And we have decided in Europe that our priority is Europe 2020. That means concrete goals, that means increase of employment. Now we have decrease of employment. We have to invest in research, increase of budget for research to three percent, in some countries, something like zero point three. So we have to increase this. We have to increase the integration of the society, the coherence there, the sustainability of the economy, and in new areas like energy efficiency, resource efficiency, climate change protection. So we know, at the political level, or at theoretical level, we know what we have to do, but without the tools, we will not succeed in this. If we say that we go to this direction, then there is no budget, there is no money, there is no investments, we will fail. This is very simple. So we have to push that the governments that sign these decisions, they have to implement their decisions too, not just to say words and then they forget the words.
Jordi and Peter?
If I may, I think that the heads of state and government already indicated a clear direction, as you were reminding us. I mean, in the Europe 2020 strategy, there are benchmarks about employment, there are benchmarks about social inclusion, there are benchmarks about research and innovation, there are benchmarks about climate change mitigation, and there are benchmarks about education. So they seem to be the five areas where action is most urgently needed, and possibly, if these benchmarks that were fixed by heads of state and government, to be very clear, if they are met, possibly, we will find ourselves in a better Europe in 2020.
Just to follow up on that, because I agree especially what our MEP colleague said, it's important to remind the heads of state what they have committed to in the past. Why do we have the EU? What do we have it for? How we cater for the needs of the Lisbon Treaty that was adopted during this multennial financial framework, and it bestowed upon the EU some additional tasks, especially in foreign policy, and additional tasks that need to be funded somehow. So in the crisis, this situation only got more intense, that both the society, the states, the people, the citizens and the decision-makers started demanding more from the EU, while when it comes to the actual money, then they suddenly forget about those calls. So how they expect the EU to do all... So how they expect the EU to do all the things that they want it to do without giving it the money that it needs to? So, you know, we need to start thinking, it's good that we have Europe 2020 and the benchmarks, but we need to also consider, it's a time of crisis. So how, do we use this as an opportunity to make a drastic shift? Or do we go on as business as usual, which seems to be the preferred option right now? Because the discussions are completely decoupled one from another. And they're currently simply discussing the usual ways without thinking in a different way. We were accused that we are doing the same thing because we are fighting for our piece of the cake. But as was mentioned before, there's a reason why we feel that it's so strongly important to invest in youth as a specific group here and now, today. While I would really hope that we follow Karina's call on really looking into how we can ensure, is there, because that's also our question, is there a red line that we can take? Because we don't agree with a overall cut from each and every area, because that needs to be a discussion by the member states. Is one policy, agricultural policy, going to be cut to the same extent as others? Or are we going to follow the rebate is not going to be touched, the agriculture policy, common agricultural policy is not going to be touched, so we are left with peanuts in which we are cut then off as well? Or do we make a bolder thing? So that's, I think, what we need to try to work out.
Okay, thank you. Any other, are there any...? Because I was reading one now. I would maybe ask Jordi this question. Right now, in times of crisis, in times of crisis, we're not only facing the financial crisis, but also the loss of faith in the European idea, the loss of trust in the European project, which is most of the time caused because of the member states blaming the European institutions. So in the end, it ends up being, well, people don't trust in the European Union as such. So does the Commission have anything planned in case the member states cut again to re-convince again the citizens that this Europe, European Union project is something worth investing in, something that really, something that needs to happen?
Thank you. I don't think that it's just a matter for the Commission, it's a matter for everybody. And I think there are two, there are secrets in what you say. First of all, this is about the negotiation of the MFF, of the multiannual financial framework. And there, as I said before, the Commission still believes that an agreement is possible around the kind of budget that it has put forward. We'll see what happens in November and we'll see what happens later, if that's the case. But we still believe in that. Then, having said that, about the importance of attaching the citizens to the idea of the European Union, I said before, it's not just a matter for the Commission. The Commission, as a matter of fact, with programs, just to come back to the subject of this meeting, with programs like the education, training and youth program put forward, we believe that this is the kind of thing that EU citizens understand very well, and that they do understand what is the added value of European Union when they see that kind of program. But again, it's a matter for parliament, it's a matter of making sure that the turnout to the elections to the European Parliament is high enough. And it's a matter, of course, for the council and for the member states to share with their citizens what's the vision for the future of the Union.
Okay, thank you very much. So are there any further comments or questions? Yes, Mathieu?
Question to Peter. We've heard a couple of times from people around the panel and questions as well, that we need to focus more on national level, because that is where maybe not ultimately decisions made, but a lot of requirements, a lot of motivations come from. How do you see as representative of national youth forums, how are they at the moment fighting for this? How are they engaged in this at the moment? And how are you as European Youth Forum also supporting them maybe, or working together with them to coordinate a little bit their actions? And thirdly, and this maybe also goes to the European Youth Associations here, how can we as European youth organizations more work together with these national youth councils and national youth forums in this as well?
Thank you very much for the question, Mathieu. It's a very relevant one and something that we try to answer and try to, let's say, work on some possible solutions. On one hand, we also have to respect what the role of the youth forum is as a European platform and advocacy platform. We work together with all of our members, and especially on the national level, we have specifically focused on those eight countries that were most hit by the crisis and that were identified by the Commission as such, and were given also specific attention in this past year and a half, where the Commission sends specific letters and claim to have reused or redirected unused funding for those countries. We have followed up together with the National Youth Councils from those countries to appeal on the member states in question, to actually make use of those. But when we approach them in public hearings in Brussels or elsewhere, they, some of them said that they didn't take advantage of that, that that didn't happen. So we're still waiting for a bit more knowledge and know-how on how that is being dealt with. So it's a bit confusing sometimes and difficult. The National Youth Councils are also, many of them are faced by their own cuts, and especially if I mention Latvia, Spain, and others, who are facing difficulties to do their normal work at the moment. So what the youth forum tries to do is to try to write on their behalf to the national level, together with them. But of course, that's very tricky, because it's easy for a national government to dismiss if something comes from the European Youth Forum, saying, you know, you're not to mess in our internal affairs. In some countries, that approach works, in some it doesn't. So we try to always go case by case, there's no clear-cut solution. What is important, that we target the heads of states and governments in the European Council. So we have established for the first time this year, direct contact with the European Council, with Hermann van Rupel and his cabinet. He mentioned us in his letter in the beginning of the year, and that we hope, I mean, small steps, but we hope that that kind of visibility on the topics can help and put pressure on national governments. And then we try to work with our members in specific countries to live up to that and to monitor that. Of course, they have different needs, so we don't have, as I said, a common approach for everyone. We see how we can support them in that. Sometimes it's with meetings, sometimes it's with letters, very different things. And I think what other international youth organizations can do, it's all about solidarity among each other. And I think you have your national and local branches in countries. So it's important that you work together with those representative youth platforms in those countries to really, you know, make visible your demands, so that AIG, ESU, and ESN and other networks on the ground can work together and do this. Because that's what will be more effective, you know. If the Dutch politicians hear it from a Dutch person, it will have more validity than if they hear it from a Slovenian who happens to preside over a European platform.
Thank you, Peter. Any further comments? Yes?
I am Dragana, I'm from Federation of Young European Greens. We are the Green Network, Green Youth Network. We have around forty-six member organizations, and we are a member organization of the Youth Forum. I mean, I won't go now and talk about why do we support this, because it's a clear... Also, what I had in mind now, when you mentioned international youth organization like this, FIG, that we can work actually in grass with our MOs, although we are a network of green political wings of green parties, but also green NGOs, especially in Eastern Europe, there are more green NGOs. And now we are trying to raise this debate and to create some kind of a common lobby with this for the member states. But I also want to tell you that in previous, we have, you mentioned what kind of Europe we want to see, is it more coherent and European? We have this climate that this idea is put into question. And sometimes it's hard to say, we want that, when we actually, you don't see that there is a strong political will. It's easy with the Greens in the parliament, it's, we have the support of the Commission, but what about the member states? And we still have problem with youth emancipation, and the youth organizations are not that strong to lobby and to be listened to, especially when, in many countries, especially in Eastern Europe, they are completely politicized and abused by the bigger, by the bigger organizations of, for example, of the parties. But what I also want to propose is to, as we are here, we are youth organizations, and maybe for the next, for the meeting of the twenty-second of November, we need to maybe go on the street and make some action and make some protest or raise attention about the issue. Of course, we don't plan to change the world by going in the protest, but just to raise attention, especially the Brussels-based youth organizations. And not only the youth organization, but all the organizations who are in favor of this coherent and European Europe. Thank you.
Just a quick reaction. Well, as mentioned before, yeah, we do work also through the national unions, because we have forty-seven national unions of students who are the umbrella organizations for the local unions in the country. So basically, we outreach more than eleven million of students. And I would say, I mean, well, we had the big discussion, our union, about the future of Erasmus, and, well, also the current crisis with the lack of cash for Erasmus also proved that, well, the students need Erasmus, and we also, well, our unions are also eager to take up some lobbying and actions on the national level, to secure those levels. I mean, I would say that the biggest problem and the biggest, well, I would say obstacle for us is absolutely the lack of information and the how, what to do. I mean, we could give the directions to our unions, I mean, we all agree that we need to lobby for education, but you know whom to talk. And that's why I was asking the question before, you know, so what will be the future? Because we also need to send a very clear signal to our unions what they can do. Because so far, yeah, we'll focus on the current proposal, we see how it can be improved and so on, but we also want to know, you know, what our national unions also can do in practice.
Okay. Yeah?
Just a short reaction, I forgot to say before, what we try to do with the Love You Future campaign is to offer space online. I know it's, you know, it's a small drop in the sea in one way, but it's important to offer in youth organizations and young people the possibility to simply have their say on these things, what do they think? Because for us, as youth forum, it's important that we gather the different inputs from different parts, from our members, but also from youth outside who is not organized, to explain how they are feeling with this, sorry, how they are experiencing the crisis, so that we can then channel this into the policy language and talk to the politicians and decision-makers to translate that into concrete measures, you know? Because we need to be aware of what our role is. We are, and most of us here are representative organizations that do policy and advocacy. So I agree that, you know, we have our members who are grassroots, who can and should do a lot of other ways of participating. Going onto the street is very important, but it's important that we, as the advocacy ones, are understanding the feeling on the ground and then channeling that through the policy language that is not always so sexy and interesting for everyone, but we have the capacity and the tools to do that. So I urge all of you to really look at the campaign website and share your ideas. There's also opportunity for youth organizations to develop non-form education-based, non-form education-based activities related to the campaign, which would help us in this, in this way. That's just to clarify and to add. Thanks.
I would like to share on behalf of, I strongly convinced that my colleagues would agree with my opinion to some of all these arguments and questions. Erasmus is not only exchange program, it's also trainership program, also Erasmus and temperatur program. When we think about the future, do you think about xenophobic and nationalistic Europe, or we think about European, European Europe, innovative Europe, competitive Europe at international level? How we can reach all these goals if national governments, they have doubts about investing to the young generation? Because I am strongly convinced that we are all former Erasmus students or EVA volunteers. I strongly believe that you know thousands of Erasmus, EVA success stories. And as a member of Citizens Committee, I can tell you that it's very difficult to approach national governments and national media to make ECI more attractive and more visible for national society. It's very easy to approach European NGOs like student organizations, European Youth Forum, young activists, et cetera. But it's very difficult to approach average, ordinary citizen and local politicians to explain them necessity to invest, to support European Union exchange programs, and also to give more scholarships, let's say, for the leading national universities. Because, to be honest, I'm come from Lithuania, from a very small state, and to get Erasmus scholarship like seven, eight years ago, it was extremely difficult. It was only like few scholarships per group for the best students. So it's mean that only two or one student per group could participate in this exchange program. And today, what we have due to this deep economical crisis, we also have difficulties to become a simple European volunteer, because sometimes you receive like hundreds of applications from a place. And the idea of these all programs was that all these programs should be open for young people, particularly with less opportunities. Because we all know that unemployed young people, particularly from the south or from the east Europe, they simply cannot go for unpaid traineeships somewhere to upgrade their skills, to improve their linguistic competencies, in order to find a job in other European state. So I think that we, as a group of citizens and NGOs, we should work together in order to help to each other, to approach national governments, and to make the better future for other young people who maybe have less opportunities than we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Simona. No reactions in this, because there's another question there?
Yep. We have been talking intensively about the MFF, and it will be approved with a bigger increase or with a smaller increase, with a reduction. But however, this will mean 2020 at the end, and I really think that we cannot wait until that moment. So I really ask the Commission and the Parliament to have a lot of extra effort in implementation and don't hesitate in making a strong commitment of the very first year, because this is now when we really need the investment on young people. And we cannot wait with ambitious plans for 2020, because we need ambitious plans for 2014.
Thank you. Any reactions? Yes?
Because I'm coming from a country that is in accession or non-accesion situation, from former Yugoslav Republic of Macedonia, and I want to say something how it's important is for these countries and for the youth from my country, this Erasmus program. Because I was a Erasmus student myself, and I know how much it changed and how many doors it opened for me, for my life. And I know how it's important, especially for these countries who are poorer, and the education in my country, you can't compare the level of education that you will get in Austria or here in Belgium and in my country. It's completely, so this is like a very, very important for countries, especially for Eastern Europe.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. So we were waiting for some members of the European Parliament to pop in, but unfortunately, they haven't been able to attend. There's a lot of things going on today in the parliament. But yeah, wanted to thank to Mr. Christoph Lizek, Mr. Edir Gardiasabal, and Mrs. Marion Harkin. They have been supporting us since the very beginning, and they wanted to be here, but unfortunately, they couldn't make it. So, yeah, I just wanted to give the floor to Nikos one last time, because I think he has some last proposals.
I would like to invite all of you in a cooperation here in the European Parliament, because I would like to organize in cooperation with other MEPs a conference or hearing about youth and employment in January and February. So I would like to ask for your cooperation for that, it's very important. And we will try to invite also young people from our countries, from Greece, maybe from Portugal, from Spain, from all over Europe, and to have a big meeting here. If we organize this in cooperation with other MEPs, then we can invite people there and to have hundred or two hundred young persons. So to give a floor to young people and to try to help them to discuss between each other and organize themselves in a better way, this is one. And the second is that I would like to organize or to host at least a meeting in Athens and to invite... to invite also youth organisations and youth and to discuss with young people from there about youth policies and about youth employment, about mobility, about all the things we discuss here. So if you like, I will try to organise this with you in cooperation. Thanks.
Yeah. So thank you very much for the invitation. I'm sure youth organisations will now jump on you after this. Yes, thank you very much, everyone for attending. I think the message is very clear. Now we all have to work all together in the same direction to make member states understand that it's very important to invest and not to cut on education and youth, because obviously the results, we won't see them tomorrow, but we will see them in twenty years. And if we're already talking about the lost generation nowadays, if we don't invest today, I don't know what we can expect. There was a very nice quote, which I would like to use to end this, which the Secretary General of the Council of Europe used in Strasbourg one month ago. We're often mentioning and referring to young people as the future, the future of future. Look, I'm sorry, this is no longer valid, the young people are now the present and we must invest now. So thank you very much for attending and hope that we can actually make it and convince the member states. Thank you very much. [Applause]